I'd like to welcome everybody to the town council meeting, Monday, May 5th, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Excuse?
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
And Counselor Ortiz.
Excuse?
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to agenda item number three, consider and accept the meeting minutes of April 28, 2024. Not available. Want to postpone it to the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion by Counselor Marquetti, seconded by Counselor Montigny, to postpone till the next meeting. Any discussions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports. Department of Public Works, Counselor Shenier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I left my paperwork at home, but we're gonna have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night. I believe the manager's gonna work on it, and he'll notify everybody.
Next Wednesday.
Right, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Anything on the agenda for the DPW? Everything was passed unanimously, including the budget.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Education Human Services, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on April 30th last Wednesday where the majority of the budget was shown and recommended from Education Human Services. We have the school, Southbridge Public Schools budget this Thursday in the Veterans Room.
Moving on, General Government, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We met on May 1st, which was last Thursday night, and there are four items on tonight's agenda that we discussed. That was agenda item number 11, agenda item number 30, agenda item 31, and agenda item 32.
Thank you. Moving on to protect the personal property, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, through you. We have a meeting last week. We have 18 agenda on meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Nothing scheduled for next meeting.
Planning development, no report at this time? Moving on to chairman's announcements. I have no announcements tonight. The only comment I have is there's a lot of questions over animal control. There are domestic animals, there are wild animals, and that discussion came up because we had a citizen call and had some issues with domestic animals in comparison to what we would call wildlife. And the Chief of Police and the Town Manager I talked to, we're gonna have a conversation on that to get some information out on the proper communication, on who to call for which call it's responsible for, because people are getting confused. They keep pointing, well, see the Board of Health, no, see the ACO, and now it's see somebody else. So we're gonna sit down and have a good line of communication for the citizens. Other than that, I have no other announcements. I'd like to move on to Town Manager's announcements.
I have no announcements.
Moving on to presentations, Counselor Dave Adams, excuse me, former Counselor Dave Adams, Veterans Council update. Dave?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Counselors, Town Manager, staff that are out here in the residents of Southbridge. I brief the same thing every six months on the initiative itself that's going on, and I just wanted to go over it again. I have to do it in November, and I have to do it in May of every year. So I've gone over this multiple times, why we're doing this initiative on the monuments. We've already completed the World War Memorial Park. The only thing I have to put up there is the donor list and a QR code that I've just received from our startup company that's doing some of the work for us, and we've placed that behind the sign over World War Memorial Park. But we'll be having that landscaped here very soon, and it'll look beautiful for Memorial Day. Obviously, a quick picture of the park, refurbishments of the monuments, and probably next November, this will all be gone because we'll be starting to work on Dressing Memorial Park on some phases. Again, this slide is really no different than I gave in November. This is the second phase of this project. Right now, the last time I briefed you guys, we're about 80% complete on the design. We're about 90, 95% completed on the design itself. That will probably not change because things change on a daily basis on where things have to be, monuments that have to be put in, and obviously personnel and time of year. Fundraising is still going on and process. I'd like to raise, the Veterans Council of Southbridge would like to raise about $1 million so we could break the ground on it. That way, we could raise the remaining money while that is going on to finish the projects itself. We do plan on putting a sign out there sometime this year before the wintertime kicks in to show the design and with some QR codes, so people could donate or ask questions and put points of contact on there. We are working currently on the design for the OIF/OEF monument. We're not sure if we're gonna put them all to one together for Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom, but obviously definitely the POW/MIA monument will stand alone by itself, and we already have a donor for that. I'm gonna show you the quick design. It's hard to see, but this is the design itself when we kinda tagged up, which didn't work out in November when I was trying to give this presentation. But if you take a look at it now, we are, this kind of design shows where the monuments will be, the extension of the parking lot itself, and what it'll look like. Obviously, there will be changes made as we go along, as we come up with some new monuments, as people donate money, and they donate it for their family or for a cause. This isn't really no change, I just wanted to throw, show it to you as a kind of like a 3D model. If you look at the very bottom of it, it's a three-tiered system. But I keep bringing this stuff up because I know it's every six months, and we haven't seen any real work done over there, but we have gotten the engineer, all the surveys are done, everything is completed. So that's, before I go on, I'm gonna ask the Council or Mr. Chair if there's anybody had any questions on this as we go along. Great, I'm answering everybody's questions. Also, I'd like to invite the Town Council personally and the School Board personally to join us on Memorial Day and walk in the parade with us on Monday, May 26th. It starts at 10:00 AM right here in front of the Town Hall. We actually have gained quite a few more following because now we have a choir coming in to sing some songs. We obviously have the band that's coming back this year, a new director. We have, actually, I just reached out by the church if they can walk in the parade to show our members to those of fallen few, and so we're very happy about that. We're gonna have student guest speakers, and Counselor John Daniel will be speaking this year because we started a new thing at the Gosar Monument. If you don't know this, but his great-great uncle died in battle in Argonne Forest in World War I in France, and his father, I don't know if he's wanted me to tell you this, but was also a POW in World War II. That being said, so we invite all the public to come out for Memorial Day Parade, and we look forward to having it, and it's growing every single year. The Wall that Hills is the Vietnam Moving Wall, the 75% design of the wall itself, the Vietnam Wall. So we're gonna put our requests in. We came in top 40, but they did pick 30 last year. Nobody, no organization in Massachusetts was picked for this year's, the moving of the Vietnam Wall, the Wall that Hills. So we were actually invited already to come back and apply. So we'll tweak some of our wording and see if we can get that out there for the public, for Southbridge and the region itself. And just so you know, the Wall that Hills is open 24/7 for five days straight when they come into the town. Wanted to bring up, in front of the Town Council tonight, I put memorandum that I wrote, and the Veterans Council has supported, on the Heroes Act. If you, if veterans haven't heard of it, or the Council hasn't heard of it, it was passed in August of 2024, which expanded the definition of a military or a veteran's spouse, a veteran itself, because believe it or not, the VA has a different definition than the state does of who and what is a veteran. This memo itself, though, is specific to the town of Southbridge under clauses for property tax reduction or abatement. And I appreciate the Assessors Office and Dean for giving me the numbers pretty quickly, and it showed at the very bottom of back page, page four and five, the cost to the town. So right now, if you're at 10% to 90% VA disability, or you're widow or widower, you may receive a reduction. I should take that back. If you're 10 to 90% as a veteran, still living, you get about $400 abatement for property taxes. If you're at 100% VA disability, you get $1,000. Clause 22J, which is enacted in August last year, doubles that. So it goes from 400 to 800, and 1,000 to 2,000. 22I is based on DOR's rating of inflation. So it could be 2%, it could be 4%. What I'm asking tonight in front of the Town, the Town Council, that I actually have a meeting with the Subcommittee, and I hope it be brought in front of the Town Council before the budget hearing, budget approval at the end of May. If you do a 50% or 100% increase, it's costing the town an extra $51,000 just to pass the clause 22J. If you do the inflation portion, you're talking only a few thousand dollars. So I'm asking the Town Council to address this, pass it, be a part of the budget so we can move on. Many other towns, and the whole of Southbridge, many other towns are doing annual meetings right now. So I hope you guys take that in consideration. Thank you. Last thing is, if you want to donate or look at our pages, see what we're doing as the Veterans Council of Southbridge, you can go to our Facebook page or see my legacy page, it's right there in links, and also you can scan this QR code to support the veterans of Southbridge itself, and there's many causes that we're supporting at this point in time. I do want to thank the Town Manager and Dean for including possibly, and I think it was the EHS Subcommittee, to increasing the amount given to the Veterans Council of Southbridge, as we usually spend about $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a year on a lot of things within the town itself. So we appreciate the increase, and hopefully the Town Council will vote for that. Any questions at this point?
Any question by any councils? Counselor Shenier?
Thank you. Dave, I just want to thank you for the work that you do, and especially for helping out the veterans in our community. There's far and few people that step up and do this kind of things, but you and your organization and the Veterans Council has really improved the lives of some of the veterans and the knowledge to us who are non-veterans about what's happening out in the world. I definitely would support the Heroes Act if it comes before us, and having knowledge of firsthand, I have a son and a daughter that were in Afghan, daughter-in-law that was in Afghanistan and Iraq during the conflict, it's still ongoing, but, and has some issues from, that the veterans help with. So I appreciate what you do and look forward to working with you to make lives better for the veterans. And I didn't, did we talk about Memorial Day yet? We did, but this is a reminder, it's the 26th, not the 24th.
26, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion by any councils? Counselor Rivas and Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, just a quick question. Thank you for all of this information, and I fully support the Heroes Act. Potentially, do you have sort of a rough estimate of how many veterans in town this could potentially assist?
So it all bases on their VA disability. I know the Assessors Office keeps a track of it, I wouldn't want to lie to you or tell you some fictitious number, but I do know Francine does a great job, who has all the list of veterans that are 100% and veterans that are between 10 and 90% as well, and then she's got probably another list somewhere else, you know, because this Heroes Act included excise taxes, included the RMV as well, and brought on the horizon. We were able to, under Chapter 115, which is the match general law, to help locally that the town helps and the state helps offset some costs for some individuals, including widows, widowers, adult family members that are actual dependents, with some funds that the taxpayers of Southbridge helps out with. For every dollar that is given to one of those veterans, 75 cents comes back from the state, by the way.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As a retired service member with a son who is currently serving and deployed at the moment, I greatly appreciate everything that you and the Veterans Council do for our local veterans. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Any other discussion by any other councils? As Chairman of the Council, I'd like to thank you for everything you do for the veterans. There are a lot of other issues that we'll be talking about moving forward, housing services and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I think sooner than better.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your time. Thanks, Counselors.
Moving on to second presentation, BSC Group, Safe Streets for All Complete Streets, Prioritization Plan Draft. Peg, Dean?
Yes, I just wanted to quickly introduce Bill Paley from BSC Group. This project is funded with a federal grant, the Safe Streets for All, and a state grant, Complete Streets. We've combined the two to have the local match be the Complete Streets funding, so there's been no money from the town to fund this project directly. I wanted to bring this forward as quickly as possible to allow for feedback. We just received this, what's called a draft prioritization plan, and I wanted to make sure it got to the public as quickly as possible so that there could be time for feedback and input. And with that, so Paley.
Mr. Chair, members of the Council, here to give you an update is Peg Sed. This project is, Peg said, is being funded by two grants, not costing the town a dime. First is the Safety Action Plan, really is two pieces I'm gonna be describing tonight. First is the Prioritization Plan, that's through the Complete Streets Grant, and then the second piece is the Safe Streets for All Grant, which is actually geared toward reducing accidents, reducing or eliminating fatalities. A brief overview of what complete streets are. MASTDOT describes complete streets as one that provides safe and accessible options for all travel modes, walking, biking, transit, and vehicles for people of all ages and abilities. The town of Southbridge has also adopted a policy, and it says to accommodate all road users using a network that meets the needs of individuals utilizing a variety of transportation modes. So this is really quite in line. Complete Streets is contact-sensitive design. It includes sidewalk upgrades, traffic upgrades, lighting, different things, but it's not just one size fits all. It's really geared toward what that particular community needs. Southbridge is different than Northbrook Field, and so on. Complete Streets is not mandatory sidewalks, bike lanes everywhere where they don't need them. It's really geared toward what that community needs for their community and their folks that use the roads. So different projects, there's four categories that Complete Streets includes. Pedestrian facilities, that's sidewalks, crosswalks, signage, things that help pedestrians cross the road. And there's also traffic and safety, that's traffic signals, it's street lighting, it's calming, it's roundabouts, it's ways to cross the street, it's signs and markings on the pavement. It's also bicycle facilities. It's not just shared road paths like the QVRT, it's also bike lanes on the street, separated lanes, sharrows, whatever that community might need. It's also dealing with intersections, geometry, how it flows, how it functions. And then there's also transit, it's buses. So if there are bus stops in town, how they get on, how they get off, is it accessible, and then also other means and methods for buses to have priority to get through an intersection. So that's eligible projects for Complete Streets. So some examples, deteriorated sidewalks, the photo in the middle, non-standard traffic signals, buttons that are too low, buttons that don't work, aren't audible. There's also non-compliant access, parking that doesn't have proper ADA compliance or access for folks in a wheelchair. Then there's also obstructions, utility poles, hydrants, signs, bushes, shrubs, you know, sidewalks that aren't wide enough. Then there's also non-compliant ramps. People can't get onto the crosswalk, can't get onto the sidewalk, can't cross the street properly or safely. So some of the applications, including sidewalk gaps, so folks can walk, get from A to B. It's also driver feedback, that's to remind drivers to slow down around a curve or over a peak of a hill. It's also crosswalk upgrades, and it could even mean separated bike lanes, either on-road or off-road. So some of the other upgrades could be traffic signals, as I said, audible push buttons, signage, the countdown timers, bus stops, bus signs, advanced crosswalk signing, crosswalk safety, lighting, and even crossings of the railroad as well. Some of the projects that we've been involved with have been upgrading crosswalks to that upper left. That was an example in Pittsfield where there was a long crosswalk, and we actually put in a median so people had a rest, a place to rest before they could finish their cross. Then there's also the bottom left, ADA compliant crosswalks, signage, so I'm repeating myself, but then there's also bike lanes that we've installed and bike trails, and even on-road bike lanes. So, two pieces. The first is the Prioritization Plan. We've already identified several potential projects, about 21, 22 projects. We've done a campusesing of the whole town, driven and ridden every street, looked at every intersection. We put together that list and given that to the town for review. Now we're starting to get input from the community, from residents, from business owners, from the town. We've established a ranking criteria, so there's 21 projects. We want to know which one's the number one, which is 21, which one has a higher priority. And this is a five-year plan, so this is going out five years to the year 2030, and to help the town implement, fund, figure out which one might get covered under another project, which one needs to happen this year, next year, and so forth. So this whole process, the goal is by this September 1st, we've submitted the plan to MASTDOT for review and approval, that takes about two to three weeks, and then apply in October for money to apply to different projects. So the town has the option of applying for up to half a million dollars to apply to construction of a project. So this whole process is Complete Streets, try to identify projects, and the second piece is the Safe Streets for All. Federal grant, it's allowing the town to collect data, identify five projects that will help reduce accidents or fatalities, and that's the goal. There have been two fatalities in Southbridge over the last five years, and so we're in the process of looking at that data, summarizing that data in a report, and we've been coordinating with Federal Highway and MASTDOT since, for the last several months. Again, we're going through that crash analysis, and then we're gonna, as part of that, we're gonna identify five projects that with the goal of reducing or eliminating fatalities in the town of Southbridge. And so the goal with that is by this December, have that completed, and then continue to work with Federal Highway, and then hopefully next spring, we're applying for federal funding to implement some of those projects. So that's the update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
So we actually have the draft prioritization plan that we were provided last week, and that's really, Bill, where I'm hoping to get some input from the Town Council. And so what I'll do is I'll make sure all of you get that prioritization plan because you're gonna have your own opinions, obviously, around town, what you think are the priorities. And when you hear him saying he's getting input, I'm sure you're thinking, wait a minute, I haven't put my input in. So we'll get that out immediately, but if you could just highlight maybe three or four of the top projects, that would be helpful for them. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I don't have the plan in front of me, but one of the intersections is the intersection of Main Street, Elm, and Hamilton. So that intersection, there was a fatality there. It's really under the jurisdiction of MASTDOT, but it's very complicated, it's got signals, it has access to the school on West Street, and so that's one of the projects. There's other, two other projects that are involved, one of the schools, I forgot which schools, but there's a, geometry is not right, it's not unsafe, but it's got flashing beacons in the wrong place, it's got sidewalks that need to be repaired, crosswalks that aren't identified properly. So those are two projects that we've identified right off the bat. But there's, again, we've identified 21, but we really haven't gotten to the process where we've got that top five. But that's, we want to have input from the Council, from the police chief, and from other members of the community, including DPW from the town, to identify where they want to push this money and make these improvements.
Rope it up to Counselor Shenier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With the Main Street project and Hamilton Street project that you're talking about, we've had plenty of issues with that, the light turning green and the traffic to walk across the sidewalk come on at the same time. In your research or study of what you're gonna do with these intersections, can't we add flashing caution lights on the walk signs so when you activate the walk sign, you'll get a flashing yellow light like we do at the post office and further up on Main Street?
So as part of the process, when we look at an intersection, that's possible, it is, but what we do is we look at the entire intersection with regard to geometry, pavement markings, signage, and the way the signals operate. And then, so we go through an analysis, and we determine, you may not have to do A, but you have to do B, and so we're gonna be using, that intersection will have specific recommendations that may include what you're talking about.
Because, and the reason I say that is that when the police chief, when we brought this matter to the police chief and he made the explanation that this is being done throughout the country, throughout the state of Massachusetts, where drivers get the green light to go and pedestrians get the green light to go all at the same time. And his concern was if we change that back just for Southbridge only, are we setting up drivers to go into other communities to have the problem, you know, what we say is a problem, but over there it's a common occurrence. So I did mention this flashing yellow light one time to the DPW director, and he thought it was a great idea just to add them. It would be a cheap fix to warn people that, hey, you got people walking in the sidewalks also.
Right.
So if that could be considered, you know, I'm sure you'll have more as the time goes.
Yeah, so one of the things that we try to do as traffic engineers or engineers is, we try to level the playing field with expectations, so that comes into play ADA compliance. So all the push buttons are the same height, all the countdown signal timers are in the same location, the markings are the same level of reflectivity. But also, we don't want to, I guess, change that expectation by making something that's unique to Southbridge and isn't unique or the same thing in another town. So we take that all into consideration, and we use traffic standards, MUTCD, to make sure that those.
I'd just like to cut in for a second. Is there any way, Peg, that we could set up a workshop with the Council? Because tonight, we will be here for three hours talking about lights, and we know where our problems are in Southbridge, we know where the cars come out when they shouldn't and when they walk and they shouldn't. So I think we, any quick questions for the presenter would be fine, but I think what we need, as you go out for the information with the public, I think we also need a sit-down for the Council to really dissect the information so we can come up with the, you know, the proper master plan, so to speak, for five years.
Happy to do that, yeah, I'm ready.
I know Counselor Kelly had his hand up, like, anybody else would like to speak tonight, it's fine. Counselor Kelly, then Rivas.
Okay. Thank you, I'm glad you mentioned, I'm glad you mentioned Elm, Main, Elm Street and Hamilton Street. That is terrible as far as, you know, before DOT redid that area, I believe there was a protected left turn there, and they, for some reason, decided that was not a good idea and decided it's not gonna be a protected left turn. The problem you have down there is, in order to get, in order to make a left turn onto Elm Street, you have to beat the traffic coming the other way once the light turns green. So what I see people doing is they'll hit the gas as soon as that light turns green, and there could be somebody in the crosswalk, and in fact, they've seen almost a couple of near misses down there with people in the crosswalk. So I'm glad that was one of the, one of the examples you provided, because I think that one certainly needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Counselor Rivas?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I, my question is around the bike lanes. Will the plans have any recommendations on whether... I, my question is around the bike lanes, will the plans have any recommendations on whether the bike lane should be sort of on the road or a separate bike lane, will that be part of what gets evaluated?
Yeah, so as part of our, I guess, our evaluation or our fieldwork, we drive down the street, we know that the right-of-way is a certain width and there are certain restrictions on the roadway, so we're not gonna propose something that's not gonna fit, but if it makes sense and it's gonna connect to a school or connect to the QERT, for example, then yes, we will make recommendations in this report and as part of the prioritization plan, one that makes sense, it's gonna be cost-effective, and it's not gonna require right-of-way takings, things like that. So yeah, we try to utilize our common sense and experience to make recommendations that they're gonna fit within that, the confines of the neighborhood and the community, absolutely.
I just want, oh, go ahead. I just had one suggestion, because we do have a lot of young people that ride their bikes in town, and there's often a lot of complaints because students don't always know the rules of the road, and so will, maybe having some input from the schools or from stu-, or having it open to students in some way where they can have some input into what they might like to see?
Absolutely, I always try to have a conversation with the superintendent or the principal of the schools to kind of get an idea of, you know, what the issues are. When I was working for the city of Newton, we did a couple of things, and I'm not saying that we have to do this as part of this program, two things. One was, we would have bike shops, bike training, you'd have a parking lot in a school, and then you'd open it up so the kids could learn how to ride their bike and turn and what a sign means. And then the other thing we did was we created a brochure, it's a two-sided brochure, and we printed hundreds of them, and we gave them out to people. On one side it was for the driver, and the other side was for the cyclist, and rules of the road, what this means, you know, what a bike lane really means to you, because both have to kind of work in the same space and play by the rules.
Thank you.
Could I just, could I have 15 seconds to just quickly highlight some of the projects that were listed? So roundabout at Main Street and Mechanic Street, intersections at Charlton Street School, Charlton Evergreen and Charlton Gulfwood, corridor improvements around the Southbridge Town Common, Mechanic Street corridor between North Street and Charlton Street, Southbridge and pedestrian curb ramp improvements at Tory Road and Tory Dump Road, Hamilton sidewalk upgrades from Crane to Hill, Marcy Street and sidewalk and driveway improvements between Edwards and Hamilton, and the list goes on. So that's just the top seven to start to give you an example and a flavor of all the projects they've outlined so far, and we'll get you that list as soon as possible.
Any other, does anybody have other councils? I think BSC Group and Peg. And Peg, going forward, I think we'll look forward to a workshop at some point when all the data is gathered so the council can wrap their head around the full package. Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the Southbridge Town Council on any issues not on the agenda? If there is nobody, I will move on to number nine. Vote to confirm the town manager's reappointment of Caitlin Jewell as Inspector of Animals as recommended by the police chief in accordance with the provisions of Section 5, Chapter 129, General Laws, as amended effective May 1st, 2025 through April 30th, 2026.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed. Motion passes, moving on to 10. Vote to confirm the appointment of Albert Solonis of Dudley, Mass. and as a special traffic constable based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028, State Ethics in Good Standing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? It was favorable at subcommittee, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of John Sipek to the Board of Registros effective immediately until June 30th, 2027, pending successful completion of State Ethics.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion? Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is, this was discussed at the General Government Subcommittee meeting on May 1st and recommended for approval unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 12. Vote to authorize the town manager to award the contract for the emergency jack replacements for the elevators at West Creek School to associated elevator in the amount of $92,178 and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Monteggi. Counsel Monteggi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this was approved unanimously, recommended unanimously at the EHS Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Vote to extend the Mass DOT micro projects grant until September 30th, 2025 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that was passed unanimously at Subcommittee, Counsel Dana is not here this evening.
Yeah. Unanimous at Subcommittee, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote to accept the 2025 Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant, SAFE grant, in the amount of $5,697.75 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya. It was favorable at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to accept the 2025 Senior SAFE Grant in the amount of $2,400 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow.
Mr. Chair, can we make a correction? You said 22,000, it's 2,400.
I'm sorry if I was misquoted? That's $2,400, and it was favorable at Subcommittee? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to accept a Community Impact Grant from the Spectrum Health Systems in the amount of $15,000 to the Southbridge Fire Department for the purchase of medical equipment and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, it was favorable at Subcommittee? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17. Vote a fire department transfer request of $8,300 from account 001220-585600, Safety Equipment, to account 001220-524100, Repair Maintenance Vehicle.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. It was favorable at Subcommittee, any discussion? Counsel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So here we, we begin again with the transfers, every year, six years that I've been on the council, right at the end of the fiscal year, we have a lot of transfers going on. For some reason, I would think after a certain amount of time, you'd be able to do a better job of, of setting up your budget. I notice a lot of these transfers, well, a couple of them anyway, are coming from the Safety Equipment Account, $9,300 from that account, last year, $10,000 came from that account, 2023, $13,400 came from that account. So clearly, they didn't need that much money in that account, and maybe it's something, maybe it's not politically correct to vote, for the councils to vote against a Safety Equipment Account, but I would think that, rather than keep putting the money in something that you don't need, you should fully fund the ones that you do need, and transfers should be like a last resort in case of an emergency. I, I completely understand if there's some expenses that are unforeseen, but some of them I would think that you could foresee it. Motor vehicle, parts, copy machine, furniture, conferences, health supplies, I think, those are things that I think you could have seen that you would need funds for that, and they should be fully funded next year instead of putting it in, putting all your funds in one and then transferring them. The hydraulic leak for the ladder truck, I understand that's something that was not foreseen, but as many councils have said to me over and over again, trust but verify, and I didn't see any invoice in my packet, no, no reports, invoice, pictures, nothing. There was nothing in my packet, anyway. So it's just something that I'm not willing to support without that type of verification. Trust but verify, I believe in that as well. And I would like to add one more thing, I believe last year the town council chairman said he wanted to see an end to these transfers, so, well, maybe next year. So that's all, thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Chairman? Not all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed, motion passes. Moving on to 18. Vote a fire department transfer request of $500 from the account 001220-558700, Parts Accessories, Non-Vehicle, to account 001220-548000, Motor Vehicle Parts and Accessories.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. It was favorable at Subcommittee, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed, motion passes. Moving on to 19. Vote a fire department transfer request of $200 from account 001220-5402200, Data Processing Supplies, to account 001220-542100, Copy and Machine Supplies.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, it's favorable at Subcommittee, discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed. Number 20. Vote to fire department transfer of $730 from account 001220-542000, Office Supplies, to account 001220-585100, Furniture and Furnishings.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, favorable at Subcommittee, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed. Moving on to 21. Vote a fire department transfer for $700 for the account 001220-519300, Tuition, to account 001220-571100, Conference Meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya, discussion? Favorable at Subcommittee, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed, motion passes. Moving on to 22. Vote a fire department transfer for $1,000 from account 001220-585600, Safety Equipment, to account 001220-550000, Health Supplies.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, favorable at Subcommittee, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, one opposed, motion passes. Moving on to 23. Vote a police department transfer request, $27,500 from the account 001210-511000, Salaries, Salary, to account 001210-511700, Part-Time Salary.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, favorable at Subcommittee, any discussion? Not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 24. Vote a police department transfer request of $11,250 from account 001210-511000, Salary, to account 001210-518100, Witness.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, favorable at Subcommittee, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on, 25. Vote a police department transfer request for $30,000 from account 001210-511000, Salary, to account 001210-515000, Holiday.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya. Favorable at Subcommittee, any discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I'm trying to understand this one, if you have a certain amount of fire, our police officers, wouldn't you know how much you would need in the Holiday Account? And I thought I heard the police chief say that he actually had two less fire police officers, so how would, how could you not figure out what the holiday pay was?
The chief? Chief Woodson, welcome.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, and for the council and Mr. Town Manager. Through you, Mr. Chair, the holiday fluctuates, we have three super holidays, July 4th, Chris-, I'm sorry, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's, depending on the staffing, there could be five people working, there could be eight people working, there could be three people working, so the holidays do fluctuate. We talked in length at this, at the Subcommittee, where the manager and I have been working over the last, well, not this manager, but the town managers in general and I over the last 10 years, and finally making this Holiday Account. I know it's gotta be short, every year when I come for budget season, I know it's gotta be short, but we're trying to do slow incremental changes and not increase it by 50, 60,000 dollars in one hit for the town, just trying to be fair to the town, to the taxpayers, and keep it reasonable. So to your point, yes, I have a pretty good idea on what that number's gonna be, a pretty good idea on what we're gonna need by the end of the year, but working with the manager, going incrementally slowly over the last couple of years is what we've been doing, trying to get to that final number.
All right, thank you, appreciate the answer.
Thank you, Chair, through you. And also, we have more residents moving into town, more places done, we're looking for more officers on calls or over time, regardless, we have two buildings, almost 200 residents, plus double the new, the old high school, whatever, and then the AO, so we have more residents, I don't know how you're gonna figure it out, chief. Every year we increase residents in the town, so I don't know, good luck, thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 26. Vote a police department transfer request of $1,000 from the account 001210-511000, Salary, to account 001210-524400, Copier Leases and Contracts.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor.
To the town manager. Is this one of these accounts that we're gonna consolidate or are they gonna be on their own for future?
The police department is on a RICO contract now, they, and we are working to consolidate as many as we can, and I know the chief has changed his copier to consolidate the number of copies he has into us, but I'll defer to the chief for any further explanation on this one.
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, so this is the first year in our program doing this, we're being charged per copy, and you might think that that's ridiculous to be charged per copy, but as I explained in the Subcommittee, we used to have to buy several printers, thousands of dollars in ink every year, so we kept everything in-house. With this new leasing project, once I get my handle on how many copies, give or take, we make a year, it'll be a set price, but this is our first year doing it per copy, but in the end, we have to buy no more ink, we never have to buy another printer, and I have worked with the town manager on consolidating everything, and that's in the near future, hopefully, so it can all be under one contract.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, Mr. Chairman? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Number 27. Vote a police department transfer request of $3,000 from account 001210-511000, Salaries, to account 001210-530000, Specialized Services.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya. Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. It was a favorable at subcommittee, discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-eight. Vote a police transfer request of $5,000 from account 001-210-5000, excuse me, 511000, salaries, to account 001-210-10-550000, drugs, medicine, and health. Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Favorable at subcommittee, discussion? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to number twenty-nine. Vote a police department transfer request of $750 from the account 001-210-511000, salary, to account 001-210-546000, building and grounds. Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Favorable at subcommittee, discussion? Not all of the favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to number thirty. Vote a transfer request from the town accountant in the amount of $2,000 from the account 001132578100, the account zero zero one one three two five seven eight one zero zero, town council reserve, to account zero one nine zero 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 five two one zero zero zero, administration, electricity.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up by the General Government Subcommittee on May first and unanimously recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I, I thought those EV stations were not supposed to cost the town any money. In fact, we're, I thought we were supposed to be making money on that project.
So the purpose for this, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, the purpose for this is, we do have to pay the electric account, but we do receive money. So the money that we receive goes into the general fund. We are not able to charge to the RMV building because that's a leased property account, so we had to set up a separate account to be able to pay that electric bill for that one meter. So that's off a separate meter. We do have charges, we review the revenue, so it's just because it's an accounting practice, that was it. We couldn't charge it to the.
So it's kind of a, it cancels its out.
Cancels itself out, yes.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Not all, those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to thirty-one. Vote a transfer request from the town accountant in the amount of forty-one thousand one hundred from account zero zero one nine one zero five one nine one zero zero, salary reserve, account zero zero one one three five dash five one one zero zero zero, salary F T.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up by the General Government Subcommittee on May first and unanimously recommended for approval.
Favorable at subcommittee, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to thirty-two. Vote a transfer request from the town assessor in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from the account zero zero one one four one five one one zero zero zero, salary and wages permanent to account zero zero one one four one dash five three one one, I'm excuse me, five three zero 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 zero, specialized services.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up by the General Government Subcommittee on May first and unanimously recommended for approval.
Unanimous at subcommittee, any discussion? Counselor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So how long are we going to keep Will Canoya as a, as a consultant? Um, I would think by now the assessor would be, you know, trained enough, it's been a year now, uh, trained enough to handle the job on her own.
So this was, if I may, Mr. Chair, these were all the expenses from this past fiscal year, for the revaluation that we had completed, the tax recap season and all that, so this is all the wages for this year's transfer, for all the work that he did this year that had to be transferred. We do have a small amount in next year's budget of forty-five hundred, just to assist, uh, for any technical questions. If it's needed, uh, fine, if not, then we return that to the general fund. You have to understand that these finance jobs are highly complicated jobs. The first two go-rounds, uh, we're substantially less we're allocating to this. We've eliminated for next year's budget, the planning department, uh, admin services. We're reducing this to a very nominal amount, just to have a consultant, uh, in case for any technical questions, as she continues her certification. But we are reducing those expenses quite a bit.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Any discuss, further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving to Counselors' Forum, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Nothing tonight.
Counselor Eavis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I wanted to go over a couple of different, um, things. I know that last week, when I wasn't able to make the meeting, Counselor Shinja talked a lot about the homelessness issue, especially around seniors, and, um, I am working with a few organizations in the community, um, and in Worcester County, Leah Bradley from Central Mass Regional Housing Alliance, uh, um, to get sort of a, um, a handle on the issue and pertaining into our, to our community specifically, and I will be having a meeting with Counselor Shinja and just getting some of his input in order to be able to bring information to some of these larger meetings of that, around our specific needs in our community, and whether we can work together to find some solutions for our seniors in particular that are experiencing, you know, uh, increased rents, like everyone else in the community, um, but seniors in particular who are at risk of being homeless, and, um, coupled with that, I just wanted to bring back to the forefront our, um, our discussion with the town manager around substance, uh, around a homelessness task force, and convening that group together so that we can bring these ideas and bring these experts to the table, um, so that we can find some solutions and some relief for our elders in our community who really deserve to have resources and help in this aspect, um, that is increasing all around, not only across the state and Worcester County, but, you know, we really wanna help people in our community, specifically around housing. Um, I also wanted to remind folks about the last day to register for our June tenth town election is Friday, May thirtieth, and we wanna have a great turnout at this election. I know that people often think about just the presidential election years, and we wanna make sure that folks come out. Municipal and local government is the most important, it affects all of us the most, and we want people to come out for, for this election. I also wanted to remind folks about the Worcester Community Action Council, Southern Worcester County Resource Fair, coming up on Thursday, May eighth, from eleven to one, at the Tri-Community YMCA, as well as Ruth Wells Art Center is having an opening reception for Laura Candela, Saturday, May tenth, from nine to three. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Counselor Shinja.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the last council meeting, I spoke about, uh, the rent problem that we have experienced in Southridge, and I was taken back by a comment by a former town counselor, that my actions are all talk and no action. Uh, I just wanna assure the people that when, when complaints come in to me, I try to forward them to the appropriate people that needs to answer the, for the complaint, or I'll do the research myself. As far as the rental problem, where I live, of the former tag, which is called Lebanon Hill Housing, and it's soon to change name again, uh, I called the governor's office, I called the state representative for our district, and I called Senator Fatman's office on this issue. They all got back to me with the, uh, same, uh, basically the same statements, that there was, forwarded, forwarded me over to the Massachusetts Housing, and they in turn basically told me that there was no, uh, no ready monies available for Section Eight housing to help these people out, and that it was years away on any applications that were being made. Since the last meeting, uh, the elderly residents where I live have been notified of a rent increase of up to seven hundred dollars, which is sixteen fifty a month. Some of them is gonna start seeing this increase June first, and others are continuing July and, and so forth. Uh, they were people that are on Section Eight housing that were notified that it was their time to re-submit their paperwork and stuff to be able to continue and get the voucher, and on the return letter from the, uh, I believe it's the Worcester Housing Authority, they told the people that they were approved for the rent increase of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. Well, over this past weekend, the people on that Section Eight voucher were told that, uh, they are gonna be responsible for an additional two hundred plus dollars more each month, and I believe that's for everybody that's on vouchers. Uh, the regulation of most of the vouchers, you fall into a thirty percent at medium income. By this additional couple hundred dollars, that's put those people into the fifty percent income, even though that they're not, uh, really technically paying fifty percent of their income. The increase that housing is gonna pay, the housing is gonna pay fourteen fifty, I believe, and the remaining balance is gonna be, have to be provided by the, uh, seni, senior citizens. This is definitely going to put people out on the street. There are families now coming together and bringing their, uh, mothers and fathers and sisters, bringing them into their homes. People that are ninety-four years old have to move because they can't no longer move, uh, around in their, pay for their apartments, and they're going into a second-floor apartment, which it's a handicap for the person, but the family is gonna put out what it can to, to help him. My point being is that if we could get the residents of this community, everybody, to call your state senator, your, uh, state representative, and ask them to support the housing issues that are presently before the, uh, state of Massachusetts, for, I believe, their hearings and, and discussions, and, and call them and ask them to support this, is it's a, it's a long way off from rental control, but it's, it's a beginning. Uh, I, I just want citizens of Southridge to be aware that you're gonna see elderly people sleeping in their cars in the next few months, and, uh, it's a shame that our local, not our local, but our state government can't step up and help these people. Uh, also on May nineteenth, which is a Monday, the Southridge Senior Center Association, which is a total different, it's not town-related, is holding a can, coffee with the candidates at the senior center at ten fifteen. Uh, I've invited the four councils that are, four individuals that are running for three seats to come to the meeting. Uh, I only invited the ones that have contested races, and it's nothing against the school committee or that, and they're more than welcome, they could come too, if they would like, but it's, uh, May nineteenth, uh, it's a Monday at ten fifteen at the Southridge Senior Center. If you've got questions of your counselor that's running, this is the time to be able to help out and, uh, come ask them. Uh, other than that, Mr. Chair, I have nothing else.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I wasn't gonna say anything, but, uh, Counselor Jor's kinda, uh, touched me somewhere in my heart. I think they should teach the kids in, uh, all the kids' ages to take care of their parents when they get older, the way their parents take care of them when they're younger, not let them sleep in the cars or on the street. Uh, I don't know, where, where we stand here right now, not too many family love each other, not too many kids love their parents, or the parents taken with the kids. I think that's where we should focus, go back to God and educate our children to take care of us when we get older. Thank you.
Believe it or not, that concept is a throwback concept of the European migration, when the parents used to live with the families, but, um, I, I think we share, uh, a lot of the same beliefs. Rent control, in the eighties, we, you have to have fifty thousand people in your town have rent control. Solely the big cities usually have rent control. I think what the problem is, is where the governor puts the money. You wanna put it into migrants, fifty million? Put it into the residents. Counselor Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did talk to the town manager about this. I had a call from a resident who was not pleased with the car down at the side of the town hall, uh, hooked up to the electric vehicle station and getting free electricity. The town manager did respond, he was going, said something about, uh, that we do have something in the works for that, for a paid station, and I appreciated it, and I passed it on. Um, the resident asked that we put a no-free-loading sign down there. I told him I, I wasn't sure that the town would do that, but I would pass that along, so, um.
Can I just respond to you, Counselor?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Yakabuchi, my office, has complained about that quite voicelessly to me.
Yeah.
Uh, we had a conversation with Joel downstairs. We may consider disconnecting that until we get the.
Good call.
The meters in.
Oh, that's a good one. I'll pass that along, too. He may be watching tonight. Uh, I also wanted to mention that I did watch the PPP meeting, it's the only one I really had time to watch, and that's mostly because the agenda tonight, but, uh, and one of the , uh, committee members said, and I, I know this is a belief among other counselors, that if you have more housing in town, it puts a further burden on public safety, but I think that you'll find that, uh, from what I understand, from what I've read, that it's not so much the more housing, it can contribute to it, but it's, when housing is further out on the outskirts of town, longer distance causes longer response time, and that's where the burden comes from, but that's also countered by less crime. Uh, from what I've read, stable housing, people who live in housing commit less crime when they have a place to live. So it's just something that we should, I hope the council keeps in mind. Of course, I won't be here after June, but I just hope the council does keep that in mind. I also heard the town manager claim that, or stated that our insurance would be going up a million dollars, and I thought that was quite outrageous. I don't know what's going on with that. Uh, is it because we went to seventy-thirty? Is it because more people or their families on the program? I really don't know, I just thought that that was way out of line, and I would recommend we shop around a little bit. I don't know if you can or not, but I would recommend it, 'cause I just, there's something wrong with that. We have a large amount of people working for this town, and we should get a better group rate than that. A million dollars, too much. Um, and, uh, I also wanted just to say one more thing about that meeting. I, I, watching it, I heard my name bantered around a few times. Um, I understand, I, I'm always against raising taxes, increased budgets, I'm, I ran as a fiscal conservative, I've never changed my mind on that, I'm still a fiscal conservative. I like to try and keep spending down. I don't like transfers, I'm always suspicious of transfers. I think after a certain amount of years, you ought to be able to figure out how to do a budget and not need all these transfers, but I get it, I have a difference of opinion than some counselors, but I just wanted to say that I didn't know that I had that much of effect on this council, that you would mention my name at a meeting that I'm not even attending, and all I can say is you're gonna miss me when I'm gone. Thank you.
Counselor, you're so close to our hearts, we'll never forget you. Counsel, Counselor Montague.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple things tonight. I did attend Hazardous Waste Day this weekend, I had a couple of, uh, video batteries that had to be put out to pasture, but it was great to see a couple volunteers from the Board of Health. I ran into Mr. Provost and Mr. Splain, and it looked like it was well-attended by the time I got there. I think there was already almost a hundred fifty people by ten o'clock. So thank you to everybody for help taking care of our town and keeping it clean, but, uh, I just wanted to give a kudos to Counselor Ortiz. You know, uh, I mentioned last week, once we approved the fire station project, how it would be great to hear from Esteban and the new, uh, youth center that's out in the same general area of town. So Counselor Ortiz reached out to Esteban, and we had an impromptu tour this weekend, about five o'clock on Sunday, and it was really awesome to see how far that project's come along. I went to the youth center when it was at the, which is the now Maki's on Chestnut Street, um, and to see that it's gonna open again. Uh, Esteban wants to have people by July being able to start services there, and I asked him, I said, you know, the fire station project in 2026, they're hoping to finish between, you know, October and Christmas time of 2026. Said, are you guys gonna be open with your full renovations, assuming all the funding goes through? And he says, our goal right now is September of 2026, so this side of town, you know, down there in the flats, it's gonna be really nice, you're gonna have a brand-new fire station, the fields have got a lot of work over the last few years, and, uh, the Bridge of Faith Youth Center looks like it's coming along just fine. Uh, thank you to Counselor Ortiz, to get, uh, myself and, uh, Mr. Provost from the Board of Health, yeah, as well, and, um, thank you for that, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to thirty-three, discussion, next meeting date? Counselor Montague.
Yes, sir. It is on Monday, May nineteenth, at seven PM in the council chambers.
Moving on to thirty-four, adjournment. Counselor Shinja, seconded by Dow. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.